Morning, everybody. All this meeting in order. Welcome to our first meeting of 2024. It's wonderful today. I'm sure everybody enjoyed driving here. So first, we have Joshua Grossman. Are you with us this morning?
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm here.
So could you please tell us what's going on?
Sure, yeah. So we have a resolution in front of you today to approve five different land use restriction agreement amendments. The original land use restriction agreements were all entered into back in 2006 in connection with a municipal bond issuance, where the county was the issuer and issued the bonds for the benefit of Collins Road Properties, that own a variety of multifamily housing facilities, some in the county, some outside of the county. And now the bonds are, they were purchased by US Bank, and the end of the bank holding period is coming up. So the bank has decided to not renew its holding period. And as a result, the borrower, Collins Road Properties, has or is in the process of obtaining a Fannie Mae loan. So they are going to refund and pay off the existing bonds, those bonds issued by the county. So as part of that, Fannie Mae has requested that certain items in the land use restriction agreement be changed that relate to the remedies so that monetary money, so that the money doesn't change hands to the county in an event of default, since the bonds are no longer outstanding.
Seems really straightforward to me.
Yeah, I just have a question. The developer, what's the name of the company again?
Collins Road Properties Limited.
And who is that?
They are based, I believe, out of Lancaster, Ohio.
Is it the Moore family?
It is the, yes, it is the Moore family.
Thank you. That's all I have, Mr. President. Alrighty. Thank you. Thank you for being here.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks, Josh. Appreciate all your help.
Thanks so much.
So at nine, at nine fifteen, we have a hearing regarding new community authority. And that is at nine fifteen. So at nine fifteen, we will pause and go into that hearing. But this particular time, we will have public comment. And again, keep in mind, at nine fifteen, we have to stop and go into that declaration. So we have a public comment, and a public comment for those who haven't participated before. Please approach the podium, state your name and address, and you're limited to three minutes. So who would like to make a public comment? Please.
My name is Scott Baker. I'm a Richland Township trustee. My address is 5470 Logan Thornville in Rushville. Two orders of business. I'm here also with my fellow trustee, Mr. Ryan Young. Two orders of business. One, we want to thank Commissioner Fix for coming to one of our December meetings and presenting the county comprehensive. We appreciate that. It was well received.
Thank you.
Thank you for being there, taking the time to do that. Second importantly, most, the second order of business is a resolution that our Board of Trustees passed. And I will read that too. It's Resolution 2023-12. The resolution requesting that the Board of County Commissioners of Fairfield County, Iowa, adopt a resolution pursuant to Ohio Glass Code, Section 30358 prohibiting the construction of economically significant wind farms, large solar facilities, and large wind farms from the unincorporated areas of Richland Township. The resolution that, that, I want to read it, but I presented the copy to you for that. It was unanimously passed by all three trustees, and it was done with a lot of consideration to the township, residents, the city residents, and the security residents. Thank you for last minute. Thank you.
Thank you.
Who else would like to make public comment?
My name is Jeff Williamson. I'm from Fairfield Township. My address is 801 Piney Road Drive in Baltimore. So now it's been six weeks since Walnut and Fairfield Township submitted their resolutions for restricting solar. And I'm wondering if anything's going to be done about that, or hear any status in today's meeting about it. Last week, I also sent you an email that had links for a four-part TV series that took place down in Clark County, Mississippi. Station is WTOATB, Channel 11. And investigative reporter, Kara Sherley, did the documentary, and it was about residents of that county and how their solar project, industrial solar, affected them. I'm hoping that you had an opportunity to watch that. There was also, being fair, they did have comment from the solar company. And lastly, I don't mind being here and getting up in front of everybody. You know, I'd much rather just stay at home and do my thing, you know. Commissioner Fix, you know what it's like, you know, to be at the farm next to me. I know they have armor, and I have spoken with him, and he is definitely not in favor of his industrial solar, especially the way it gets implemented and how it gets, like, shoved in under the blanket, so to speak. A lot of the farmers, when you get approached by a solar company, have to sign a non-disclosure. So most of the time, if you were to talk to a landowner, a large landowner, you knew that anything is going on. So he told me that he doesn't believe that good farmlands should be used for solar, and that it's inefficient, and it's taken good farmland out of production for several decades. Also, I added that he's not been approached, but if he signed a non-disclosure, wouldn't really be able to tell me. And that he would never sell out. He said he would be more than happy to come and tell this to himself, but he doesn't like to get involved in politics or get involved with politicians. So that's all I have to say for this week. I hope that gentleman will make public statements.
Anything else, please?
Here. Sheriff Beimer, 3464 South Bank Road, Walnut Township. Solar. I know at one of the December meetings, Commissioner Davis stated that he didn't think there would be any additional projects other than what's being proposed now in his lifetime, which I don't believe is true, because there are companies up from Texas right now contacting farmers. One of the things that we do need to be cognizant of is that the Supreme Court has taken a look at the Birch Solar project in Augles and Allen Counties. And OPSB denied that project. They denied a rehearing. So Birch Solar took it to the Supreme Court. The Supreme Court told them that they have until January 22nd to file their briefs. And then the, you know, then they go through the whole rigmarole of going through the, you know, all the tough stuff. But that decision isn't supposed to come down until approximately August or September. And I know at one of the meetings, one of your past meetings, you had stated that you're kind of going to see what the Supreme Court, OPSB does. We can't afford to wait to see what the Supreme Court thinks about another project that is, by the way, very similar to ours in Fairfield County. We can't afford to do that, because, like the gentleman just said, this is, a lot of this is under the table, where people can't find out for years later that a project is being proposed. And the solar companies don't have to tell you that they're doing this. As you well know from Amanda, that had been going on for several years, and the solar company representative didn't even come forward for quite some time. So I'm just asking you to not wait for the Supreme Court to make decisions, not wait for OPSB to make decisions on other projects, and to take care of Fairfield County people who are being affected by these projects, and to pass a resolution with now, I believe, now, I believe, anyway, Liberty Township is wanting to do one, but they have tabled theirs for the last couple of times. So they're, they're supposed to be doing one also. So I would appreciate looking at that.
Thank you. We have about another three minutes. Does somebody else have a comment? In that timeframe? Okay, we'll move on, and thank you all for being here. Anything else, Amy?
I'll just add a thank you to Amy for her excellent work yesterday at the Board of Zoning Appeals meeting, along with Marcy Fields. I was proud to be a part of that county team yesterday. Amy, you hit it out of the park, and Marcy did as well. So thank you very much.
But I would add to that also, you know, for second information, which would never hold up in court. I understand that between yourself and Marcy, you did a great job. Thank you for. So we're going to allow Hani to get started. We'll have to interrupt.
Okay, no problem. Just a point of information. Yesterday, we have the reorganization meeting of the Board of Commissioners. And for those of you that do have documents that referenced Steve Davis as the president last year, please make sure you're adjusting those to reflect Commissioner Levesey, who is the president for 2024.
Wait, I was demoted? Somebody told me.
Another item here to share with you all is I did receive a request from Lori Levis, the Court Administrator of Domestic Relations Court, requesting a budget adjustment for 2024.
So how would we like to handle that? Would we like to ask the judge administrator to come in and discuss it?
We certainly could do that.
I think we actually need to have a conversation about it. It's not something we can just.
It hasn't been that long since we've completed our 24 budget.
I can reach out to Lori and the judge and get that scheduled for an upcoming Tuesday. Perfect. Thank you. One more minute. Highlights of resolutions. The review packet does contain a list of administrative approvals, and there are 43 resolutions on the agenda for the voting meeting today. Some of these are routine beginning-of-the-year actions. There is a resolution authorizing the amendments to five existing land use restriction agreements from 2006. Time's up? All right.
So we're going to open the hearing regarding new community authority. I understand the community authority in this regard would be Rick Sabrack. So Rick, please.
Yes, it's for a subdivision in Violet Township. New community authority provides opportunity for a, basically, a board to be appointed to additional taxes or other things on that subdivision. And this is a first one in the county. CAs go through the county commissioners. Next step in this is. Township, Violet Township would provide us three names next week. Three representatives for the board over the NCA, along with one public official that would be. And along with three from the developer. And the goal is basically to, what an NCA does is, people that are using, whether it's living in the neighborhood, or whether it's there's businesses there, they're applying things, so the mindset is whoever's using the improvements is the one ultimately paying. So this sets up a board to be able to allow those things. There's, yeah, first in the county, and this is just a subdivision, so there will be no sales taxes or other things like that that could be levied. That could be levied would be additional income tax or property taxes as that board system.
So do we have anyone here who's a proponent of this new community authority? Anyone opposed to this? Anyone just like to make a comment regarding that?
Seeing guns, so this hearing is out. So this is one of the tools that we've talked extensively about as we've gone around the county with all the villages and townships and talking about the land use plan. And the whole idea behind protecting our existing taxpayers is to use a tool like this to have the people who are coming in pay for the, you know, the developer will pay for the infrastructure, and the new residents will pay incremental taxes that will offset the cost of providing community services so that the existing tax base is not then tasked with having to pay more for the new people coming in. So this is the first of what I expect will be hopefully many, right? As we continue to develop throughout the county to protect our taxpayers and preserve land. So thanks, Rick, for working on this.
Commissioner Davis, do you have any opinions on that?
No.
Okay, so this hearing is now closed.
I do notice Dr. O here. I would like to point out that we are in the process of seeking a developmental disabilities board member. You've had some changes there in the board structure, and I think Tenny and Dr. O have been working together. These, this particular board member is something that we do have to advertise, and we've gone through that process. What is the deadline on that, Bennett?
So once the vacancy is made on the board, the Board of Commissioners appoint somebody within 60 days.
Did we have a posting deadline to seek applications?
A deadline to receive applications. It has been active for the last three weeks, and May 30th is it.
Perfect. Thank you. So just sharing that that is something, this particular board member does need to meet specific criteria, is correct?
Correct, yes. Dr. O, would you be able to, I forget the requirements for this position.
Yeah, particularly for this position, we're looking for a parent or guardian of a minor child, someone who would be eligible for our services, either in early intervention, birth to three, early childhood, or childhood up to age 18. So that parent or guardian would be that representative on the board.
Perfect. So if there's anyone out there, or anybody out there that knows of somebody that might have that interest, please reach out, and we can get them connected with the application.
So if I may, the last time we went through this, we had three applicants who met that criteria, correct?
I believe that's accurate, yes.
And we appointed one who didn't work out. We appointed a second one. Do we know if the third one might still be interested? Because they were all really well qualified.
Yeah, I wasn't involved in that process, and so I don't know who that third person was. In speaking with Bennett yesterday, I do know we don't yet have any applicants. I do have information in early intervention, seeing that there are two parents who are interested, and I've sent them the information and the application link so that they can fill it out. This one's a challenging one to fill, no doubt, and so, but we'll continue to partner together as we can to try to get information.
Ben, can we dig up?
Yeah, we'll look into that.
Yes, thanks.
All right. As I was starting to share, first resolution of note is a resolution authorizing the amendments to five existing land use restriction agreements from 2006. And that was what Mr. Grossman was speaking to earlier. That is on the voting agenda. Also have a resolution granting the meeting locations for our evening commission meetings that will take place in April, August, and November. April will be in Bloom Township, August in Violet Township, and November in Pleasantville Township. The resolution approving the establishment of the Violet Township New Community Authority is also on, as Rick had spoken to. And we also have a number of resolutions granting permission for elected officials and their staff to travel and attend conventions and meetings. A resolution to approve the 24 Fairfield County Emergency Operations Plan and the signing of the promulgation statement. John, anything on that?
Nothing. No big changes.
And we also have the standard resolution from the Engineers' Office to approve the annual county highway mileage certification for 23, with that recorded figure being 361.123 miles of road, and has been verified by ODOT. Anything on that, Jeremiah?
It's just a process we have to go through every year to certify the mileage that we're using taxpayer money to take care of. See something similar come through from the townships also.
Perfect. Thank you. Resolution to contract with Veragee for building automation and HVAC control. This is a renewal of that contract. John, anything there? And then lastly, oh, sorry, go right ahead.
Will you touch on that for a minute? Were they involved out at the Liberty Center?
Veragee did have the Building Energy Efficiency Project, which is this building, Hall Justice, and the solar. That arm of the company, their build side, is subcontracting mostly. This Veragee, getting the parent company, the automation system used to call Dynamix. So they've merged two companies to create Veragee Dynamix. This company had a relationship since 2007.
We're comfortable with this wing of the company?
Yes.
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 Thank you.
And then lastly, a resolution to enter into a contract with Lancaster Fairfield Community Action Agency for recycling and education programs for 24. Our budget review.
We are in the process right now of completing the end-of-year reports, as well as the analysis of that data, as well as transitioning and reporting to 2024. So more to come person.
All right. Thank you very much. Rochelle, would you like to take counter review and invitations received, please? And hang in, there's a few.
There are a few. The Wanted Township Flat Plan Meeting is today at 1:00. The CTO is having a Virtual Taxation and Finance Committee meeting, January 11th at 9:00. The Hospital is having a ribbon cutting for the 40th anniversary on January 11th at 4:00 p.m. The Pickerington Chamber of Commerce quarterly membership luncheon at January 18th at 11:30 a.m. And I believe Dr. Brown is speaking at that. There will be an Eagle Scout Court of Honor for Andrew Carter on January 21st at 2:00 p.m. at the Alley Park Lodge. The 2024 Homeless Point in Time Count is January 24th at the Maple Street United Methodist Church. Meals on Wheels is hosting their annual dinner and volunteer recognition banquet on January 25th at 4:30 p.m. United Way Polar Plunge is January 28th at Buckeye Lake. The Lancaster State of the City address is February 15th at 8:00 a.m. at the Crossroads Event Center. We have some save-the-day items for you. The Fairfield County Safety Fair is March 5th from 11:30 to 1:00 p.m. at the Workforce Center. The Fairfield County Board of Developmental Disabilities is having their celebration of possibilities on March 20th at the Wigwam Event Center. Lancaster City 2024 State of the School is March 27th. Lancaster Fairfield Chamber Awards and Annual Trade Show is May 9th. The Workforce Center graduation will be May 17th, and the career signing day, June 6th. The following correspondence was received from Dr. Carrie Brown, a memo on House Bill 187, the wins of the week for December 15th, 22nd, 28th, and January 4th, memos on December 21st, 28th, and January 4th containing information on work group for enterprise assessment taxation, a SharePoint pilot collaboration, the conveyance fact sheet, the vacation conversion policy, Baysel Western Project, and the Baysel Western Project, sorry, general fund revenues, 2024 payroll processes, end-of-year deadlines, and the county auditor retreat and strategic plan update. Dr. Brown also sent the commissioners a thank you note for use of the Liberty Center for the auditor's annual strategic planning retreat. The Fairfield County Health Department provided their December 14th bulletin titled, "Since the Season to Drive Sober, Drive Sober or Get Fold Over." The Lancaster Eagle Gazette published an article on December 15th titled, "County Wants to Buy Colonnade Building, Medical Building on Sheridan Drive in Lancaster." The Ohio Court of Appeals, Fifth District, sent a letter and report regarding compensation paid court appointees. Liberty Township sent their comprehensive land use plan. We received the certificate of result of election for the Meals on Wheels Older Adult Alternatives of Fairfield County and the Fairfield County Library District. We also received two judge entries appointing an administrative judge for the General Division of the Fairfield County Court of Common Pleas and a presiding judge for the Fairfield County Court of Common Pleas. The Lancaster Eagle Gazette published an article on December 27th titled, "All Fairfield County Elected Officials Were Run Unopposed in the March Primary Election." They also published an article on January 7th titled, "Fairfield County Commissioners Distress Transportation, Housing, and Workforce in 2024." The 2024 Homeless Point in Time Count donation collection will be January 1st through 19th, and items can be dropped off at the United Way at 115 South Broad Street. The City of Lancaster sent a Board of Zoning Appeals meeting notice. Fairfield County Sheriff's Office and the Prosecutor's Office sent their 2023 Penance of Justice reports. A letter from the Fairfield County Engineer was received January 2nd regarding training technicians for Ohio's Future Infrastructure Program. A liquor permit was received from the High Division of Liquor Control for 1004 Winchester Southern Road in Canal Winchester. The Fairfield County Heritage Association sent their membership renewal letter. We received a letter from the Coalition of Concerned Voters of Ohio regarding security flaws in Dominion Image Cast 10. An expedited Type 2 annexation petition was filed for 45.1 plus or minus acres from Pleasant Township to the city of Lancaster. The Fairfield County E News update from December 15th is included in the packet, adds the Fairfield County Board of Developmental Disabilities Imagine Newsletter and the December Auditor's Letter, Ledger. Fairfield Soil and Water Community Conservation District sent their December newsletter, and so did the Environmental Stewardship Committee. We received a letter from a resident regarding industrial solar energy, and I believe that is it.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you.
That's all I have.
So moving on to all business, Commissioner Fix.
So this past week, we, I went down to Madison Township to talk about land use and wound up talking about several other things. But with that, we have successfully visited every township and every village in the county. Met with the Farm Bureau twice, and we also met with the school superintendents last week, and have, I think, been responsible and responsive in the way we've communicated why we're doing what we're doing, and, you know, how we're trying to help the townships and villages prepare for the future. The feedback initially was not great, but within the past four weeks, we've gotten calls from several townships that were perhaps reluctant to consider doing something like this, who are now have recognized that it's in the best interests of their community to at least have a plan and are reaching out for help. So I feel like all the time and effort that the whole team put into going around to every township and every village is paying off. Our next step is to get together next week to finalize the edits, right? So we went and asked the questions at every township and every village and got feedback. And so the map has changed considerably from where we started. The narrative has changed somewhat from where we started, and we're going to finish up all those edits and lay out our plan for recommunicating back to all the folks who provided that feedback. Probably not going to immediately go back to every. Uh, probably not gonna immediately go back to every township one-on-one and every village one-on-one, but rather try to get everybody into a big room like we did a year ago, or now, well, year and a half ago in, in May of twenty-two, to, uh, um, circle back to that housing symposium that we had. You know, the first ask that we had was to come up with a land use plan, and it was taking us longer than perhaps I anticipated. Um, we're getting there, and if, it, it feels like we're doing the right thing. So, um, we'll announce, you know, those dates and what that plan's gonna be once we've got that all firmed up, uh, and then it'll go to regional planning and to us to pass a land use plan. And then really, it's up to the townships and villages to take from that what they would like, uh, or to create their own. As, as we saw Liberty Township, uh, submitted their land use plan, that's awesome. That, that was the ask at the very beginning, is, you know, create your, your land use plan. So Liberty Township has gone and done that, and there are others who are working on it, which is great. So, sorry to be long-winded, but, uh, it was a big, long project, and I'm really still grateful to everybody on the team who, uh, went to all those meetings. Uh, it was really worthwhile. Um, not every meeting went the way we thought it would, uh, some for better, some for worse, but, uh, at the end of the day, we got great feedback. I think the township trustees and the village mayors and councils were appreciative, and, uh, we'll see where it goes from here.
Very good. Commissioner Davis?
No.
Great. So, uh, yesterday I had the opportunity to, uh, involve many, uh, part of the state workforce board, which I'm on, and we dealt with a couple issues, one being benefits regarding monuments and those who are on state benefits, and the other being a, uh, state workforce plan, and very good discussion, ongoing discussion as we continue to look at workforce and how we can be helpful. Uh, one of the major issues is, uh, those who are receiving benefits, and that, uh, those who are receiving benefits, that, that not be a problem when it comes to whether the person takes a job or continues to receive benefits, but actually be helpful in getting that person employed and employing one of them. So there was a lot of good discussion, uh, a lot of changes hopefully coming in the future that will be very positive in that regard. New business, Commissioner Fix.
Nothing today, thank you.
Commissioner Davis?
No, thank you.
So as you may have noticed, the room is a different color than the last time you may have been here, than the backdrop. So it was quite a surprise for the commissioners, uh, there are some repairs that had to be made, and so in that, uh, going those repairs, they thought it might be nice to just, uh, freshen the place up, so, John and everybody that's involved, I understand, uh, Jeff Porter had something to do with the color, you know?
You have the design team right there. I think Lonnie put that piece artwork together, and just as a color picking master, what was it?
Shoe master.
Shoe master.
Michelle, you gotta change his name today.
Uh, and yeah, some minor repairs still to come with the ceiling, perhaps, uh, cleaning up, uh, just a refresh.
Congratulations.
That thing is really cool. That, that, uh, nice job. Couple hours in a glass shop with Lonnie, and I was there, but, uh, that's the, the end result.
We've been working on that for about a year, um, and thanks to John for his patience when I would backburner, um, what we were doing, so.
Good. So, um, Lisa, anything you'd like to tell us about? You know, that, I had three inches of snow early this morning, and then it start raining, and now I have none. How's everything going with the Engineers Office?
No, I'm just fine, as long as that snow keeps melting and staying low, we'll be all right, but like, uh, we got some weather coming, so we're getting ready for that. Keeping everybody on their toes, um, everything else is going all right. Happy New Year to everybody.
Sure. Those, uh, salt barn coming.
We are finalizing the plans right now, so we're gonna have that thing ready to bid here.
Okay.
So we're on track for, for this year.
Very good. Brandon?
Nothing today. Happy New Year.
Yeah.
Um, Mel, Breiser, and her team are doing a normal, excellent job. The tax bills are at the printer as we speak.
Well, that's good news. I'm excited about that one.
I know, and that's part of the fuel that keeps the county going, and so those funds. Um, so hopefully they'll be in the mail maybe Friday, if not for sure next week. Once again, Mel and her team, they just do a great job in keeping it top.
Happy New Year. The two thousand twenty-three map of the year is the Zane Trail map. The CAUV Solar Map had a lead in the beginning, and the Zane Trail map took the lead later on, and Nick Billy is the individual who's responsible for that map, which is actually used in a variety of schools in their education program, so we're proud of that particular map. Back in the month for January two thousand twenty-four is reflecting all of the locations of the little libraries and blessing boxes off there out, Fairfield County, and there's been some very positive feedback about that. Um, Muskingham County is going to replicate that for their area. They saw this on Facebook, and I, I didn't know that it was on Facebook, but it's evidently, um, reached that particular county, and they are going to be doing a similar map. We have the new procedures for the municipal withholdings of influence, and that is going very well. Really appreciative of the payroll team for working a lot of weekends and evenings to make sure that that is ready to go for two thousand twenty-four. There are multiple agencies, particularly at the state level, that are struggling with those requirements, and we're appreciative also of the designated forms that department heads have in place that make it much more efficient for us to be able to put that in place. We did hold our annual retreat on January fourth. We're still focusing on customer service technology. You'll see some new things relating to lot splits and, um, focusing also on leadership. We have a C A A O Leadership Conference that we're holding on February seventh at the Wigwam. We have more than a hundred people already registered for that. We thought that there would be thirty-five people registering. It was a regional aspect, and it's just grown from there, so we'll report back on that as well. The strategic plan has been updated, it is online, and we're focusing also on some accessibility issues, so we have some training about autism dementia and, um, focusing on our language that we use with veterans with the Homestead Program, and we will be holding the Veterans' Retreat again in two thousand twenty-four. I think we're going to be holding that in Pickerington this year as opposed to Lancaster to the all parts of the county.
Good. Agistrate, Josh, how are you?
Good, very well.
Good to see you here.
Uh, thank you, it's good to be here. I just wanted to briefly comment on the letter from the Fifth District Court of Appeals. You know, they indicate that some counties are having difficulty finding appointed appellate counsel. Uh, we are not, we're good, so it's good to have that information, but I just, from a court's point of view, um, we're content with where the, the attorney's fees are.
I see, Holly's sitting back there. Holly, anything to report? Everything going well in regional planning?
So, um, our group will be attending the meetings with events, starting off the new year with looking at our substation regulation, then, um, the county wanted to vote that as well, so we're working, even, we're off the top. Um, we have C D B G, um, honoring that's coming in any month, so we've got a lot of stuff going on, development obviously coming out of the floor, our day-to-day aspects as well. Um, so that's about it.
Thank you for everything you do.
So, uh, before we jump up, just wanna say welcome back to Missy Hoover.
Oh, yeah.
Now you went through some tough times, and it's good to see you back.
Good to see you. Now, so our, uh, formal, uh, meeting ended this time, all go celebrate a renewed.
Yeah, I picture that you guys can really start.
And what is? Figures.
Yeah, that's perfect. Great. One, two, three. One, two, three. Great. Sweet.
Please rise if you're able to join me in the public.
I salute the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands on my nation under God and indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Oh, yes, we will be closed next Monday, which is January fifteenth in observance of Martin Luther King Day.
Verbal amendments for December twelfth, two thousand twenty-three, and January eighth, two thousand twenty.
Uh, make a motion on the December twelfth meeting to approve.
Just got them. Seeing that roll call.
Mr. Beck?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Levace?
Yes.
Make a motion on the minutes of the January eighth meeting to approve.
Mr. Beck?
Yes.
Mr. Davis? Mr. Levace?
Yes.
Both sets of minutes passed, three zero. From the Commissioner's Office, we have Resolution twenty-two-four dash one dot nine dot A. Our resolution authorized the amendments to five existing two thousand and six land use restriction agreements and matters related thereto.
The Commissioners, I move items A, B, C, D, E, F, G, H, I, J, and K.
Any discussion?
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yeah.
Commissioner Levace?
Yes.
Motion passes three zero from Fairfield County Auditor, Resolution twenty-two-four dash one dot nine dot L. A resolution granting the Fairfield County Auditor, Dr. Carrie Brown, and auditor staff permission to travel and attend during two thousand twenty-four.
So moved.
Discussion.
Codified requirement, thank you for your consideration.
Yeah, if we didn't approve this, does that mean you'd have to stay here all the time?
So, to answer your question specifically, most of the training that I conduct, I do online. This also allows for employees to attend conferences within the budget that's already been provided. It's a codified requirement, it probably needs to be updated.
Just like to give you a hard time.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Beck?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yeah.
Commissioner Levace?
Yes.
Motion passes three zero from the Fairfield County Clerk of Courts, Resolution twenty-two-four dash one dot nine dot N. A resolution granting the Fairfield County Clerk of Courts, Brandon T. Meyer, and Clerk of Court staff permission to travel and attend during two thousand twenty-four.
So moved.
All right, discussion. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Levace?
Yes.
Motion passes three zero. In the Fairfield County Court of Common Pleas, a resolution, a Resolution twenty-two-four dash one dot nine dot N. A resolution to appropriate from unappropriated in a major expenditure object category, Fairfield County Common Pleas, F Y twenty-one, T C A P Grant twenty-eight fifty-two.
So moved.
Discussion.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Levace?
Yes.
Motion passes three zero. In the Fairfield County Dog Shelter, Resolution twenty-two-four dash one dot N dot O. A resolution approving an account-to-account transfer into a major expenditure object category, Fund two zero zero two.
So moved.
All right, discussion.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yeah.
Commissioner Levace?
Yes.
Motion passes three zero. In the Fairfield County Emergency Management Agency, Resolution twenty-two-four dash one dot nine dot P. A resolution to approve the two thousand twenty-four Fairfield County Emergency Operations Plan and signing of the promulgation statement.
Under Fairfield County Emergency Management, I move items P, Q, R, and S.
All right, discussion.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yeah.
Commissioner Levace?
Yes.
Motion passes three zero. From the Fairfield County Engineer, Resolution twenty-two-four dash one dot nine dot T. A resolution granting Jeremiah Uff County Engineer and Staff permission to attend.
Under Fairfield County Engineer, I move items T, U, V, W, X, Y, and Z.
Scott.
So Jeremiah, does our mileage change last year at all?
Uh, it, it fluctuates every year, just a little bit, unless we add a major section of road or something like that. I don't know, for instance, Election House Road, where we went around the airport, I mean, that would add a little bit more. You know, when I say it fluctuates, it was three hundred and, I think, sixty-six point something, might be three sixty-six point one, one year, three sixty-six point two, one year, just.
When a village or city annexes land, they sometimes annex the road, that would impact it as well, I hope. Thank you.
Additional discussion?
Commissioner Beck?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yeah.
Commissioner Levace?
Yes.
Motion passes three zero. In the Fairfield County Facilities, Resolution twenty-two-four dash one dot nine dot A A. A resolution to sign a contract with Veragee and the Fairfield County Commissioners for building automation and HVAC control.
Under Fairfield County Facilities, I move items A A and B B.
All right, discussion.
I just wanna say thanks, John, you know, not necessarily related directly to these two items, but this room, and I understand you were working in the elevator shaft today to make sure the elevator was running, so.
Visually inspecting it.
Right. Whatever you were doing to make sure that it worked, it's most appreciated.
Um, the, the second resolution here, under Facilities, is speaking to the space at the Fairfield Center, um, where the B and B will be locating, so just extending that contract with, um, B P L. Or amending, I'm sorry.
Choose, uh, B and B.
Not until next year.
Wait a minute, we're putting a B and B in the.
They, uh, with their contract, which is existing now, would be to occupy July one. So we'll be out to bid, uh, within a month, uh, and then remodel, and have them occupied by July one.
Additional discussion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yeah.
Commissioner Levace?
Yes.
Motion passes three zero. From Fairfield County Job and Family Services, Resolution twenty-two-four dash one dot nine dot C C. A resolution to approve a memo receipt and expenditure for Fairfield County Job and Family Services Fund twenty-seventy-two, reimbursing Fund twenty-eighteen.
Under Fairfield County Job and Family Services, I move items C C, D D, and E E.
All right, discussion. Seeing that roll call.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yeah.
Commissioner Levace?
Yes.
Motion passes three zero. From Fairfield County Juvenile Probate Court, Resolution twenty-two-four dash one dot nine dot F F. A resolution authorizing approval of a contract binding between Fairfield County Probate Court and the Fairfield County Board of Developmental Disabilities.
Under Fairfield County Juvenile Probate Court, I move items F F, G G, H H, and I I, and J J.
All right, discussion.
The first one there is in regards to, um, the Guardianship Services Board, so appreciate D D.'s participation at that, that highest partner level.
Additional discussion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Levace?
Yes.
Motion passes three zero. Lancaster Fairfield Community Action Agency, Resolution twenty-two-four dash one dot nine dot K K. A resolution to enter into a contract between Fairfield County and the Lancaster Fairfield Community Action Agency for recycling and education services for two thousand twenty-four.
So moved.
All right, discussion.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yeah.
Commissioner Levace?
Yes.
Motion passes three zero. The Fairfield County Prosecutor, Resolution twenty-two-four dash one dot nine dot L L. A resolution to appropriate from unappropriated in a major expenditure object category, Commissioner Allocation for F O J Prosecutor Allowance.
So moved.
All right, discussion. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yeah.
Commissioner Levace?
Yes.
Motion passes three zero. From Fairfield County Recorder, Resolution twenty-two-four dash one dot nine dot M M. A resolution granting the Fairfield County Recorder, Lisa McKenzie, and the recorder staff permission to travel and attend during two thousand twenty-four.
So moved.
All right, discussion.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yeah.
Commissioner Levace?
Yes.
Motion passes three zero. From Fairfield County Regional Planning Commission, Resolution twenty-two-four dash one dot N dot dot nine dot N N. A resolution to approve a development agreement for the Stone Hill.
A resolution to approve a development agreement for the Stone Hill Estate subdivision.
So moved.
All right, discussion.
Hi, this is yours. They've already signed one, but they changed their legal name with the Secretary of State sort of updating.
Additional discussion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yeah.
Commissioner Levy?
Yes.
Motion passes three zero. From the Fairfield County Sheriff, Resolution twenty twenty-four dash one dot nine dot O O. A resolution for approval and agreement between Carpine and the Fairfield County Sheriff's Office.
So moved.
All right, discussion.
This is for the new nine-one-one software, which will bring a lot of advantages to the sheriff's office. He should discuss this with all of you.
Additional discussion? Call, please.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Levy, I'm sorry, Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Levy?
Yes.
Motion passes three zero. The Fairfield County Treasurer, Resolution twenty twenty-four dash one dot nine dot P. A resolution granting the Fairfield County Treasurer, James Bonson, and the treasurer staff permission to travel and attend during two thousand twenty-four.
So moved.
All right, discussion.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yeah.
Commissioner Levy?
Yes.
Motion passes three zero. Payment Phil, Resolution twenty twenty-four dash one dot nine dot Q Q. A resolution authorizing approval of payment of benefits that need Board of Commissioners approval.
So moved.
All right, discussion. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yeah.
Commissioner Levy?
Yes.
Motion passes three zero. The next regular meeting is scheduled for January sixteenth, which is next Tuesday at nine A M.
So we, after, we will be going into executive session to discuss personnel matters, and after that, we don't expect any additional matters to come before the Board of Commissioners. So I ask this with the question now, is there anything that needs to come before the Board of Commissioners at this time?
Just want to say, Happy New Year to everybody. We were here yesterday, but most of you weren't, so Happy New Year to all of you. I'm excited to serve another year with my fellow commissioners, especially Commissioner Davis, who appears to be suffering from a headache, and, and our staff, and, you know, we've got great things on the horizon. I'm looking forward to it.
Thank you. Anyone else? Commissioner Davis, we can just do the honors of thinking that much.
We will make that motion. Before I make that motion, I guess I want to make sure I'm correct on the guest list. Have the commissioners, county administrator, the deputy county administrator, outside council, representatives from any sheriff's offices. Wasn't sure if the prosecutor's office needed to be in this room.
They certainly can.
I'll make a motion. We go into executive session and discuss personnel matters. In that session, I would like to have the commissioners, county administrator, the deputy county administrator, representative from the sheriff's office, representative from the prosecutor.
Roll call, please.
Do you want a clerk?
Clerk's an outside counsel.
And add the first to my motion is that the mission survives the second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Levy?
Yes.
Motion passes three zero.
Thank you all for being here.